The committee meetings with Streets and Public Buildings and Mr. Severance to discuss the Farmers Co-op Street Vacation Rezoning.
Mr. Severance.
Yes, we do have Mr. Ball here at least to help talk about this a little bit, I believe, or Emily. I thought the gentleman was coming from the Farmers Co-op, but I'm not certain he is.
Okay. Well, I was not at the Planning Commission meeting, but my understanding from talking to Mrs. Blankenhorn is that it did pass, both items passed unanimously. So the, I mean, you guys were there or wasn't?
I wasn't.
Okay.
I can speak to this.
I wouldn't dare either.
We're full of strawberries.
Anybody.
We did.
They were all designated survivors that day. No, the, Jamison did come present his plan for the co-op for a couple of things. One was to vacate the street and the other was to rezone from, to general business to make, basically that whole block there where the co-op operation exists is to make that just so that it's self-contained. And I do, the long goal of this whole thing was to make sure that we didn't have, during harvest time, we didn't have tractors backing up all over the downtown area. This would streamline the procedure, being able to pull in the grain and turn around onsite rather than having to go out and about and, and come back into the, into the part two of the operation, whatever that case was. So anyway, it was unanimously passed in this planning commission. We felt it was a good idea. It was another way that we, we're sure that we could keep this business in town as well and streamline operations. So that's the short of it.
So I can provide some history though. Farmers Exchange for years had owned a brick house they rented. They had trouble with drug dealers and things and we worked with them to get that demoed. Probably, Rob, has that been four years ago?
About.
About four years ago. So they were saying, hey, it was nice to have a rental, but it was falling in disrepair. That's not their business. They're Farmers Co-op. They're not a rental agency. So they got the building tore down. They've been working on this master plan pretty much since then. They've had some management change. They've looked at moving the facility out of town, what that does, right now it's sitting on a rail line. So part of this is, we are encouraging them to use the rail. What we're seeing is six to eight hundred trucks, you know, leaving the facility to unload every year. And so from a master plan perspective, we want to get them back in service where the, when the grain is received there, as much of it as possible can leave by rail. They're also basically reducing their footprint and this also, this will keep several jobs in town and hopefully with this master plan, they will also reduce some traffic. As far as the road itself, there's, there's no utilities in the road that belong to the city. It's, you know, we're on a grid system. They cannot expand to, so they first looked at expanding to the east. There seems like there's a big piece of ground there. The problem is, as you may know, there's the large aqueduct that comes out of the Heartland Commerce Park, goes through that and then to the river. So to build a grain terminal on top of a stone-arched culvert would be, you know, a seventh wonder in the engineering world and nobody has money for that. So the culvert actually collapsed. When they leave the, when the semis or tractors leave the current scale, that culvert collapsed sometime about 2014 because they were actually driving over it. Cameron worked with them and rebuilt it to be a concrete box structure underneath Gambier at that location, but it did collapse one harvest. The whole thing fell in. So this is a little, like I said, the traffic flow is a lot better with this plan. And again, the house is already tore down. It's been gone, so.
Yeah.
Questions?
Just to add to that, it is R2 right now and they are asking for general business. Basically Lewis Street dead ends into Gambier Street right now. So a dead end in Vine instead. So it's not like we're taking out a section and they gotta go around and get to the other side. There would be no other side. You just stop one block shorter.
Yeah.
They, I think they went to zoning appeals twice for a couple of buildings they had and worked with the city on that closely. So they've been a good partner all along.
None of that is Brick Street, is it?
No. It's asphalt. Everything out there is asphalt. The closest Brick Street is West Street, which is where Mount Vernon Hardware is. But this won't affect that at all.
Yeah. So basically if you've looked through it or read through it, they wanna make South Lewis Street is actually gonna be where the scales will be installed. So it's quite a significant, I think he talked.
And I don't think, was, there was nobody in opposition, was there?
Nobody has expressed any opposition.
Mainly around their rental properties. Mainly, there's very few owner occupied, hence the R2 zoning.
Right.
And the zoning with general business already there is not spotting, a general business in the middle.
Right. Right. I hear the trains go through, uh, once a week or so and it's not grain season. What are they hauling on those, those trains?
So the, they visit the industrial park about once a day. So they're, right now they're mainly delivering to the bulk product, to the industrial park.
Delivering what?
Bulk products.
Okay.
Wirehouses are big.
Yeah.
A wirehouse also ships out a lot of their doneage cardboard as well as what's coming in, the big rolls.
Yeah. So right now Farmers Exchange, they're, part of the machinery that loads the train, they had a breakdown in Marion and they moved that piece to Marion. And so right now they are unable to transport by rail. But it's about maybe a $60,000 item. They're trying to get another, you know, how it is. They need another one of these devices to be able to operate by rail. So I've met with the, the railmaster and communicated with the sales department for the railroad. They actually have one. And so I put Jamison and his folks in touch because the railroad, our local railroad, is looking for customers and they would like to get that system back in working. So.
How many trucks a week, did you estimate are coming in for this?
To empty the grain facility, somewhere between six and eight hundred.
Yeah. Man, I'm just thinking of the streets.
Well, but here's the thing, if they move, if they move out to Harcourt Road or to Kenny Road, most of the grain's going to Koshakton. So if we, if they move out of town, they'll just be going all the way through town instead of halfway through town. So a lot of stuff's going to Koshakton. The rail line goes to Koshakton. So this is a very busy grain terminal. So they've turned this grain over multiple times. He said it's one of the busiest terminals in their whole system. So we are still an agricultural community.
Right.
At the heart, so.
I'm in support of it. It just seems, it just odd to me that it's in the middle of the city. I mean, it's in the middle of a residential, it probably was the edge of the city a hundred years ago or whatever.
If you go back to, I was just gonna ask. Sixties and seventies, how long has that facility been there?
Well, I mean, the white silo that's across from Mount Vernon Farmers Exchange would've been built in eight.
I couldn't hear you.
The white silo that's by the Mount Vernon Farmers Exchange Hardware would've been the original one in their early 1800s. So I don't remember.
And the railroad came through.
I mean, I, I remember the, when I was a kid and that thing was full-blown and, and I'm 59 years old, so. But Mike probably remembers it.
Well, you had, there was more than that. You had Wayne Cagsefeed.
Right.
There was two or three. It wasn't just that there.
And they've been, they've been occupying that for probably seventy-five, eighty years.
Farmers Exchange under Hardware Stores, all big teeth?
Right.
The one thing they did in recent memory was they've improved their, their dust system. So I don't remember if it was 2012 or so, they put in, they did a dust improvement. The new facility would have the modern dust suppression. They were gonna have, you know, modern fans with less noise. They'll probably have some security cameras to help with the neighborhood too.
And just so council knows, there is a public hearing on this, June 26th at 6:45.
Three.
So this will get a first and a second and a third read.
Yep.
Good. Any other questions? How long does that public hearing have to be, by the way?
Well, if it's at 6:45, half hour.
Statute does not have a defined length of the meetings. We have traditionally set them for a half an hour.
Yep.
That's a long time for something not having any opposition.
Yeah, that, I was gonna say, is there any way to shorten it?
Not at this point.
No.
Sometimes you can't win.
Yeah, I mean, at, at this point, we've advertised the meeting from here to here and if we were to go and change that, we would have to then go and kick it out 30 days from the date of the change and so.
Brink's next.
Somebody order pizza that night.
I'm thinking Mel might bring some cookies.
Oh, you know what? I'll have to figure that out. All right. All right, thank you first of all. Any other questions otherwise? I think we're good.
Yeah, well, during the Streets and Public Buildings Committee, we'll move on to another Streets and Public Buildings Committee, Mr. Severance, about property leases.
Yes, and we do have Emily coming up to talk to us about these, at least two leases here, right?
Yeah, um, so we have two commercial leases. This is for Steve Carpenter, who is Mount Vernon Clock Company, who we purchased that section of building for, as well as Almost Famous Sweets and Sodas. They are obviously existing tenants. Almost Famous Sweets and Sodas is going to be expanding into where the barber shop was. And then Stephen Carpenter's lease is to continue his Mount Vernon Clock Company operation. He is moving out of the section beside him that he was just using for storage and he's gonna focus on his storefront for about the next year and then has plans to move after that. Do you guys have any questions about these leases?
Where, where did Barber Shop go?
Uh, nowhere.
They, they chose to cease business when we said, we'd really like you to actually pay rent.
Yes.
And they decided that they were going to.
Okay, bye.
So remind me, 'cause I read both those, do we have a penalty clause in there for not paying rent?
Uh, yes.
Mm-hmm.
They have a 15-day period to get that paid and then they're initiated a late charge. Now, not all of the previous leases we had had those.
So the previous lease with the Barber Shop didn't have a clause?
It, it did not. Um, you know, at some point your, the question becomes, is it worth the time and effort to pursue blood from the stone? Because even if you get a judgment, can, what, what can you collect from them?
Does it cost you to get a judgment?
It costs us filing fees and then it costs amounts of money to docket those judgments as well as additional potential costs in attempting to collect. And at least it was our thought that the two people who were signed on the lease this time prior to us taking over would be judgment-proof and so it would be us be, we got them out. We don't have, you know, they've cut off their rights to be in the space and that seemed to be a better use of our time than attempting to collect blood from a stone.
Especially if you have all those fees. Thank you.
Um, so will the candy shop be utilizing the space in a separate way or will it change the actual footprint, like remove a wall or something like that?
Um, they're going to be using it for like a party room. So it's not actually gonna be like an extension of their storefront, but they're gonna be able to open it for events. They are planning to do about two months of renovations inside of it. No major knocking down of walls, but completely updating the space for the next two months and then they're hoping to kind of open it to the public and start having events in there. So that's their plan.
I just was wondering about the structural changes that might occur.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
I don't think that, looking at our engineer, I, I don't think that we would allow them to do actual structural changes.
That's why I was, that's why I was curious.
Yeah.
His face really showed what I was looking for.
Yeah, no, I would not recommend.
Since we're in the rental business.
Yeah.
Who does, holy moly, who does the repairs? Who do we, do we contract out? Is it something else we're throwing back on Tom or?
Um, so most of the time if we do have any requests, they do go to our Public Buildings and Lands Department. I mean, they're able to put work orders in for those or I just call John up directly. We haven't had anything major other than a few things here and there. Most of their previous leases have them responsible for the internal workings, but even then if they have an issue, like one of their sinks were clogged, John was able to go out there and assist with that.
I do think it would be good, I, I know John's career's being stretched a little bit.
Yes.
It might be good to have some conversations about what these facilities need and maybe what the future facilities might need in terms of facility management.
Yeah.
It's also a little bit worse because he's down an employee right now in the cemetery, so.
And just workload in the summer compared to winter, I think is another big one.
I mean, we, we have the.
That changes a lot.
We have the money from the leases that we could use and I would certainly think that'd be useful to do that, yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe Terry and Rob and I'll talk and maybe bring something next, next meeting.
Yeah, there'd be ways that we can help manage that.
Cause I think Terry budgeted what, like a hundred thousand revenue, if I remember him.
What other businesses are there, like Hearing Aid and all that? What, what happens to all that?
Um, so our, the Hearing Aids, uh, that's Roger. He is still in business. Um, we had one other tenant in this section that did move out. Uh, she was like the life coaching, um, business. We've had the Spalding and Kitzler move out, um, as well as the Barber Shop, but the rest of the commercial businesses are still around that have been there since our purchase. Uh, but we did have five residential tenants move out since we purchased.
Todd.
So.
So we have a rule that we have to, if they're displaced, provide a space for them. So how's that?
That, that, okay. The rule would be is if we decide to, you know, once we get to the point where we're ready to tear it down and they're still there and they were an existing tenant, we will have to do certain things to help them relocate, including costs and things like that. But if they choose to leave before we condemn the property, uh, they will forfeit those rights. So such as the Barber Shop, they don't have any rights. Spalding and Kitzler don't have any of those rights. Um, the, all of the tenants won't have any of those rights, so.
That move out.
That move out.
Yeah.
That choose to move out. Or if we end up having to evict people for non-payment.
So for the, for the rest of the businesses, you know, the Hearing Aid shop provides a good service. You know, we are looking at the design of this new building with a retail wrap under it. So we've discussed with the Hearing Aid guys potentially moving temporarily and then maybe coming back once the building is completed to the same spot. So having this sort of retail wrap to preserve that. So we've gotten a lot of comments about preserving the look and feel of downtown and as we start to think about this future building, it's, the footprint is bigger than we need, so we can easily allocate part of that space to a retail strip because we will not need a front door on, uh, Main Street. So the goal would be to see if he would move temporarily and then actually move back in after the renovation.
Do we have to help him move?
Yes.
Yes.
Under the federal law, we would have to help him move, so.
And we actually have space that we could move him to.
We do have a space for him that we've discussed locating him in temporarily. It'd be a similar space, but part of his challenge is when he changes his address, he has a large, he has to do an inspection and there's a lot of paperwork. We would have to help with that process to move him, so. And we're committed to doing it.
Mm-hmm.
So at this point, he's totally fine. Um, you know, we still have some, a lot of work to do yet before we get there.
Anything else?
So I guess we would ask to pass this.
Thank you.
You know, Emily has spent a lot of time working with everybody to make sure they're comfortable with these, these agreements. Mr. Carpenter, again, first year was no fee, was our purchase agreement. His, that expires on July 1st, so in this deal, he would be paying us a fee in a, basically a month a month. So when, when he's done and he's ready to move out, he just gives us notice and then those, that contract will close really any time after a quick inspection.
Yep.
And that will also extinguish his rights to any sort of relocation costs or assistance.
Yep.
Yeah, my intention is to move this to both of these, the third and the final tonight, so.
Yes, please.
Yep.
I got a few days, so.
A little time here and there.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I adjourned. Streets and Public Buildings, I don't know, Mr. Hay, are we ready for Dora? Are the people here or you wanna wait?
Lacey here? She is here?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, Brian. Um, week ago.
Okay.
Brian?
We're gonna move ahead then to the Planning and Zoning, Mr. Hay, to discuss Dora.
Thank you. Before I start, Barry, are we up and running now?
Um, we're recording, so we'll be able to post. We're just, we're still struggling with the string right now, so we'll keep it. We'll be able to keep, uh.
Everybody's aware there's a problem, we're trying to fix it.
Yes.
That's what we're at. It's at 6:20. All right. Council, I, we had discussed, I believe the last meeting, about having our experienced Mount Vernon Director, Lacey Philkins, come talk to us about Dora. We had talked about Dora, the last time we spoke about Dora, I believe it was last September. And if you remember, we, they were wanting changes then and we said, let's wait till we have the new director, think it'd be best, some of you might remember that conversation. And so here we are, what, a couple weeks, week before the next First Friday, and we're having that conversation. There is legislation on, about the new signage that they wanna use for downtown, but I think in the time we have, I'd like to go back to talk about Dora, previous conversations about Dora, the legislation, and then I see we have some documents here to discuss Dora. So thank you for coming.
Yep, absolutely.
And I, I'll give you the floor to, what, like I said, what I'd like to talk about is Dora, I see have a presentation here with some First Friday information in as well.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, I, I'm the one that's kept asking, let's talk about Dora because there were a lot of questions when we passed it. Um, it wasn't passed unanimously before.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there was conversation about Dora and not having Dora for First Fridays. I led that chart. Um, I still don't like the idea about Dora First Fridays, I don't care how it's done. But that's just me, so I'm gonna give you the floor and then we'll, hopefully have some time we can, um, talk about. Go ahead.
Yep, I'll be quick with this. Specifically wanna mention just the signage as it relates to the Dora boundary that was passed via the resolution 2021-81. The boundary, as you can see on the map here, is a permanent boundary that was passed. The Dora boundary is always the Dora boundary as far as the state is concerned. Um, that, you can find that information in the Ohio Revised Code, Dora Section and Section D, Part Two. Uh, there always has to be at least two qualified liquor license holders within the Dora boundary. So we hit that, we've got plenty within this boundary that was passed. Um, and the boundary may only be changed, whether it's increased, decreased, or dissolved altogether by legislative action with a public hearing. So the events as they were run last year, and I will talk a little bit about those events in a minute, should not have been made smaller. So the boundary for the event can be whatever it is. It can be bigger than the Dora boundary, it can be smaller than the Dora boundary, but the boundary for Dora remains the same regardless because it is permanent. Um, so that means even if Music and Arts Festival typically takes up about the same footprint as First Friday downtown, there are qualified liquor license holders outside of that boundary and they may still sell Dora beverages if that event is a Dora-approved event. People may leave the event boundary as long as they are within the Dora boundary. So that's kind of where this idea of putting in this more, what we're calling permanent signage, comes in because the boundary doesn't change. Uh, the current signage that has been used was purchased last year, is 24 by 36-inch core grating plastic signs. Um, we have tried sandbagging them and using other anchoring methods and they just don't stay in place if there's any sort of wind, rain, weather. A car driving by close to the sidewalk will knock them over, they will blow into the street, they will be moved easily from their spot. Um, and this creates potential unsafe conditions and can confuse event-goers in the general public. Again, we would hate for someone to get hurt by one of those signs blowing over or blowing into the road. So because the boundary never changes regardless of the type of event or size of the event, the signage should kind of be in line with that.
So let me, if I could interject, when you talk an event, I'm just gonna use a specific I have in mind. Um, so Stein would have an event, that he called an event on Vine Street.
Mm-hmm.
And the side door of Stein's.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so that event had to be approved through your committee.
Yes.
Also had to be approved through the Chief of Police.
Yep, the city, yep.
But you're saying that that event at Stein's from Gay Street to Main Street on Vine Street, if they carried a cup out of that and walked down to, um, the bourbon, that's okay?
Yep. Yep. Because the Dora boundary is the Dora boundary regardless of the size of the event. So anybody, anytime there's an approved Dora event, we say this is Dora. This, any of the liquor license holders within that boundary that have met our qualifications, which our legislation requires that they go through several different trainings, one through Kstat, one through New Directions, as long as they have completed that, they are qualified liquor license holder. We have some that have not completed that. Um, they can sell and people can be within the boundary. So courtesy signage could be put up if there's specific areas where we don't want people to go with their drinks, but there's no legal ramifications if it's an approved Dora event.
So Rob, when we pass this legislation based on specific event areas, like I just stated?
The state says that the legislation sets the door boundaries and unless council would come back and change the boundaries for each event, the door boundaries can't change. The only way door boundaries can change is by specific legislation by council.
So we were wrong?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. And let her finish her presentation, unless you wanna ask the director?
Well, my concern is, that I've talked to others about, if you have a door, a door event going on and, and I'm looking at the door boundaries, is the whole boundary open?
Yes.
Okay, so there's a door event going on, the whole boundary's open, we all see that boundary. My, my concern is, if you don't have a door cup and you have a, a can of Budweiser, you could, you could be held liable for open container?
Yes.
Yes.
And that's not equal justice. If you don't have that cup, if you're walking around with a door cup, then you're, you're free to go.
Correct.
That's the problem I have with it because if somebody, if somebody wanders into the Dora boundary and they have an open container, that's what very well could happen to them because they have an open container.
Correct, because the legislation states both at the state level and here locally that you must, all Dora beverages are to be in plastic cups marked clearly as Dora beverages. You can only obtain that through purchase at a qualified liquor license holder.
So it's like that to maintain the integrity of the drinking going on?
Correct.
Okay.
You can't, and we don't want glass, glass gets broken, there's issues there, and they have to obtain a new Dora cup with each purchase. So if I purchase a Dora beverage at Flappers and make my way down to Baxter's, I have to discard that cup from Flappers before I can purchase a Dora beverage at Baxter's.
And I think if, if there's a way of getting that out to people, that they just don't wander into a Dora event with an open container and end up going to jail.
Right.
Or getting a fine. That's, 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 that's my concern is, is that they would look at it the same way. Well, they're, they're drinking out of their, their cup.
Mm-hmm.
So it's just more of the education of the people that may not be directly involved with the event.
Right, and we still do have some of these former, what we call prevention signs that have the Dora rules on them that are large, that could still go up easily, particularly during these larger-scale events in downtown, that say, that specifically have a photo of the cup and says, must be on here. Um, it's on our Frequently Asked Questions document, which we have shared multiple times on our sources, so, and I know Mr. McNeil talked about it in some of his education videos that he put out last year and the year before as well. But that, yeah, somebody, you can't BYOB to a Dora because that's not allowed. Um, you can't sell alcohol if you're not a qualified liquor license. You can't sell alcohol if you're not a qualified liquor license holder, and you can't drink anything that's not in a Dora cup, and it can only be beer and wine, so.
And also that people are not required, even if you're in the Dora area, private owners are not required to allow people with Dora cups in. So, such as the area surrounding the Mount Vernon Nazarene University, their park. You are not allowed to bring Dora cups in there. They're a private landowner. They restrict that. So, you know, so even though it is part of the Dora area, the private property owners within the Dora area have the ability to say, yes, you can bring Dora beverages in, or no, you cannot.
Right. So, many of the, not many, but there are a contingent of shops and business owners downtown that have the "Please No Dora Beverages" stickers on their doors. And they're very clear, brightly colored, and some have made that choice because either their building is owned by MVNU, or they've made that choice for personal reasons. It doesn't really matter one way or other to us. But they have those on there, or they say, "Dora Beverages, Welcome," whatever it may be. So, the new signage that we're proposing for the sidewalks is in keeping with that look of the signage that you would see on the business doors.
So, you said the signage currently flaps around and doesn't move out. Who pays for the new signage?
We did.
And I say I'm Park National Bank, and I have a sign on my door that says, "No Dora Beverages." Who pays for that? Does the bank have to pay for that?
No, we paid for all of the signage in 2022. We paid for all of the sidewalk signage.
Who's "we"?
Experience Mount Vernon.
Okay.
Covered the cost of that. Last year, we covered the cost of all of the Dora cups that are logoed with all the Dora information on it. And KSAT is the one that earns a dollar off of each sale of those. So, we don't earn any revenue off of Dora whatsoever.
All right. I think it was two meetings ago, the police chief whoever talked to you about this. Have you sat down and talked to the chief about the new, that it's event-wide, it's boundary-wide now and not event-wide? Because when he spoke to us, I think it was two meetings ago, I don't think he was real thrilled with the idea, at least the way he expressed it with me, and about the type of coverage it would take for police. Do you have had that conversation?
We, he was at, we had a First Friday meeting at the beginning of the month where both Captain and the Chief of Police were there. We talked about it. We talked about boundaries. Captain Scott McKnight is on the Dora Approval Committee as well. So, we have been clear with, you know, the event boundaries are the event boundaries. That doesn't change. First Fridays is never gonna be the entire span of the Dora boundaries. But we cannot cut out any of our qualified liquor license holders that are within the boundaries.
And they were okay with this then?
Well, it is, I mean, it is what it is. The boundaries are the boundaries.
Did the chief say okay?
Yeah, he said we would need two police officers for First Friday as opposed to the one that we normally pay for, but that was the only difference.
And who will pay for the second?
We will. It'll come out of our budget.
Go ahead and continue. They have questions. We'll just ask them.
Sure. I did spring sample of, if you guys wanna feel what it feels like. This is the smaller version. This will go around the South Main Plaza, because that technically is outside of the Dora boundaries, even though it's inside the Dora boundaries, because it's private property, and we wanted to be respectful of that. So, this is that non-slip texture. It'll fix to the sidewalk. It will only be replaced at which time that it needs replaced or repaired. It cannot move around. The QR code links directly to additional Dora information as well as a list of approved Dora events. So, if the date and time in which you're scanning that is not listed on that site, which is updated automatically, it's not an approved Dora event. Again, it is in keeping with that original packet about not blocking wayfinding signage for city, state, county, as it will be affixed to the ground. We talked to several other municipalities that use these, in fact, this exact product, and they've had very good luck with weathering and clarity for eventgoers or just Dora boundaries in general. This is a list of Dora events from '22, as best as I could ascertain. Again, I wasn't here. These definitely, this indicates applications received. Doesn't necessarily mean all of these events were approved or happened. But there were 10 that took place last year. No Dora-related issues were reported. And roughly $1,500 was raised for KSAT efforts through the sale of the cups, as those were a $1 markup. So, if you were to go somewhere and purchase a Dora beverage and walk out with the cup, you paid a dollar more for that beverage than you would have if you sat in at the shop. That dollar then was passed on to KSAT for their budget. This year, KSAT is managing the cups directly with the qualified liquor license holders, so they can purchase them directly from KSAT.
So, man-affected. What you're saying, that means that this was, if each cup is a dollar, and it was $1,500, so 1,500 instances of purchase of a cup?
Yes.
And that might be more than, one person might have purchased three.
Right, right.
But it was 1,500 individual purchases?
Yes, based on how many cups we had left at the beginning of this year when we went through our storage. That's, you know, that's about what we can best ascertain. So, that's not indicative of how much money went into the downtown economy, because you have to figure out an average price per drink, and then the dollar markup and that kind of thing. But that's how much we know went towards countywide alcohol abuse prevention initiatives. An interesting statistic with this is the municipality of Worcester has a Dora. There's, operates a little different than ours certain days, certain times. They go through 25,000 Dora cups a year. There is no money that goes to any prevention efforts with the sale of those cups. So, that is, you know, the more Dora events we have, the potential positive impact on KSAT's budget goes up. 2023, these are the events that have either happened or are approved by the committee. Additional expected events, but no applications yet received. Music and Arts Festival. We've received an email from them today saying they intend to apply again for this year. And then the Johnny Appleseed Apple Festival, which took place last year as well as a Dora event. But no application for that yet either. So, this year, we're looking at maybe seven events in total on the high end, so.
Who's your sponsor for June?
Riverside Recovery.
And who receives that money from that dollar? I'm sorry?
Experience Mount Vernon to cover the cost of First Friday.
Who receives the dollar that's going to, does Riverside Recovery get that dollar?
For the Dora sales? No, it always goes to KSAT. There's a partnership with...
They're not part of it?
Yeah, KSAT receives, and then they allocate out as they do for their programming. But the partnership and the legislation is through KSAT specifically. Just some things to keep in mind in terms of First Fridays as approved Dora events or events downtown in general. Having First Fridays as a Dora event allows event attendees to experience the entirety of the event as opposed to if they choose to purchase an alcoholic beverage. Right now, the best they could do to continue to experience the First Friday event would be to sit on the patio at Flappers and maybe hear the music that's going on on the square. Or go to Baxter's and sit at the high-top counter and see the back of an exhibitor. But they can't support a business downtown by, through purchase of a drink and go to the event. Again, the additional large-scale Dora events that happen in town is continuing funds raised for KSAT. It promotes economic growth by just attracting more people to downtown, slows people down, keeps them in downtown longer, because they have to finish that beverage before they can leave, or they have to throw it away, which I guess they could do as well. Increases overall spending in downtown by encouraging purchases at these liquor license holders. I don't have the study linked here, but I'm happy to send it out. 2012 study found that local restaurants recirculate 73% of the revenue back into the local community. So, all of our liquor license holders in downtown are locally owned and operated businesses. There's not a single national chain in our downtown. And then just fosters an overall sense of community and encourages socialization. Dora really is an economic development tool, and my job is to look for ways to bring more people downtown and have them spend money in downtown.
Question.
Yeah.
So, my understanding then, we have not done First Fridays in the past, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do you think there would be some people who would not feel comfortable coming to First Friday now because we're gonna let people walk around with alcohol?
That's always a possibility.
So, we could benefit, but we could lose some people too?
Potentially. First Fridays previous to COVID did have beer gardens at them, which obviously was a more contained area. But Stein would host beer gardens on Vine Street during First Fridays. So, alcohol at First Fridays is not a novel idea. And people still have to choose to go purchase a beverage at one of the qualified license holders. You know, it's not gonna just be out on the street necessarily, other than people walking around with it. It won't be being sold outside of these businesses.
I think there would be some people that'll struggle with that.
Potentially, probably.
Especially when you have events for a lot of little kids. I know that MVNU's gonna, they always have games there. And, you know, be a lot of little kids and young families there, so.
And the Mount Vernon Music and Arts Festival was a Dora event last year, as was the Johnny Appleseed Apple Festival. And Johnny Appleseed Apple Festival also had the elementary schools participating as part of the entertainment. Just as a basis of comparison.
So, you've already bought the signage?
Yes, we were given the go-ahead to buy the signage, not realizing that there was a legislative need for these. So, we have paid out of pocket for that signage. As I said, we don't earn any revenue when it comes to it.
Who gave you the go-ahead?
We had emailed with Lacy Blankenhorn and Mr. Zick, and there was no specific zoning regulations. It was $700, so I don't spend $700 lightly as a small nonprofit. And we were given the go-ahead, and it was after they came in that we were told that it needed to go through this body. So, we have them. They are sitting on the floor of my office.
You can't return them?
No, no, we can't return them. They're there.
Well, they're necessary, because from the state, this is the boundary.
Correct, yes.
The state says you have to use stickers on the sidewalk?
No, but I think that it is necessary to mark the boundary as it is approved at the state level. That's all I'm saying. Sorry, Tammy.
No, I just wondered why when, I thought I heard you say you had already bought them when it hadn't been approved yet.
I would not have purchased them without approval.
You also have Dora on your First Friday advertisement, correct?
No, not anymore. Took it off.
Oh, you did take it off. That's where I saw it.
Yeah, it's off. It is not on any of the print publications, not on anything, because it is easier to publicize something than to backtrack.
John?
My concern is, I'm a lifetime resident here, and I remember the Music and Arts Festival when it was the D&amp;M Festival. And before it was that, it was Dixie Days. And it's just concerning to think that what I'm hearing tonight is, and we've started First Fridays. I don't know how long First Fridays has been going on. But it's concerning to hear tonight that the only thing that's going to enhance our First Fridays and our festivals downtown is to inject a little liquor into them. I'm not against drinking, but I'm gonna stretch to the means. I like to have a beer here and there every other night. But my concern is, what are we showing? We've had these festivals for years without injecting that into it. I got the idea when they had the First Fridays and the D&amp;M Festival, they had the beer garden. But it was in a contained area, in one area. That's where you consumed it, where you stayed to consume it, and you could go back out and enjoy the rest of the festival. But what I heard, what I heard just now was that it would enhance more people, sales. So, I, it just, it bothers me. I have to really think about this, because is that where we're at? But the only way we can enhance ourself is to inject this kind of stuff into it. When I don't do that publicly, I do it at home. And that's just where I'm sitting at it. So, it's just, I just gotta do a lot of thought about it.
And I was not here when this was passed, not in the rule.
I appreciate what you're doing. I just, I just don't want any repercussion of your, you know, you're going against this because you're... No, I'm not against drinking. I'm against enhancing something that we put together for families to be together and enjoy themselves. But we wanna draw more people in, and the only way we can do that is to inject beverages into them. So, that's all I have to say, Mr. Hay.
Thank you. Janice?
I guess I messed up. I thought originally Dora was gonna be done separate than First Fridays. When did it get switched around?
We had a verbal agreement with Anthony that to go ahead with the legislation, that he would not do it on First Friday. It was a verbal agreement. And it was said more than once here at council. But it was never legislation. I guess I should ask for it.
What type of events would you envision being Dora events if not these large-scale events happening in downtown? Keeping in mind that the boundary is what the boundary is.
Can I answer that?
Yeah.
I'll be blunt. I voted no on every Dora piece of legislation that's come before us. And I'll be even more blunt. For a visitor to come to Mount Vernon, and the first thing they see when they step into our downtown area is a sticker on the sidewalk that says, "You can drink here," is not the face of Mount Vernon I want.
That's fair. That's a very fair...
I would second that comment.
I was gonna hold my comments to the last and answer that same question.
Yeah, same thing as what Tammy said. It's, the drinking isn't what, you know...
That's fine, but if we have an event-based Dora that was approved, regardless of who voted yes and no, what type of events would this body have envisioned being Dora events?
What we spoke about when we had the legislation was events that would go through your board.
Okay.
And events that would be approved through the Police Department that did not include First Friday. And other than that, we, I will speak for myself, did not establish any other events that you could have. I said, and with support, that I didn't wanna see it at First Fridays. I'll give you a little background. Mel asked, when did First Fridays start? I could probably give you that with a little bit of research. I was part of First Fridays for about eight years. I was also president of the board at one time. I worked volunteer for about eight years on First Fridays. I see the people that come to First Fridays. I was also part of First Fridays when they did have what they called the Beer Gardens off to the side. If I was a family that, the one reason we had them where we did is because if a family didn't wanna be part of that, and those, such as the Oaks Club had them in their lot, they didn't have to go there. They didn't have to go by there. It was their thing, and that worked out pretty good. I don't like to see, there again, if anybody knows me, they know I drink a beer. I've drank at Flappers. I've drank at Baxter's. I mean, but I don't, the people I see at First Friday, I don't think whether it's in a Dora cup or what it's in, is a good place to mix it. It's a family-friendly event that people can take their kids to, and it never had alcohol in it. I hate to see it start. I see Worcester has $25,000 in cups. That's wonderful for Worcester. Westerville has, I think, the stickers. That's wonderful for Westerville. But I think Mount Vernon has to stand up for some of the things that Mount Vernon stands up for.
I thought Westerville is a dry.
No.
It's not?
No.
They were at one time, oh.
So, for the piece of legislation that is up tonight, it is about the signage in order to set the actual boundary that was set by the state?
Correct. I mean, it's to mark the boundary so that... Correct. I mean, the it's to mark the boundary so that it's clear, because currently our, anytime there's an event, signage has to go up at the boundary.
And you always did it, not you, but they always did it before, right, with the other?
No, it was done incorrectly before because the boundary was being set by the event boundary as opposed to the actual boundaries, which was not legal.
I just wanted to go back to the legislation that's actually on tonight, and that's what that piece that we have in front of us is about.
We'll give that a first reading, a second reading, and probably a third reading.
Okay.
Ma'am, I wasn't on council last year, so this is all new to me. But uh, to answer your question, and maybe this is a little off the cuff, but these events that were listed in 2022 make more sense to me than the events listed in 2023. And again, I haven't had a lot of time to reflect on this, but a Flappers Bar and Grill event, Fridays on the Block hosted by Stein. Though these kind of things are are a bar and grill kind of event, and that that makes more sense to me uh, than than a First Friday. So that's just an answer to your question.
Sure. Um, some of those events were specific to certain fundraisers that were taking place in '22. Um, Stein, as Mr. Chevron pointed out, is no longer open. Uh, so they won't be hosting any events. Mount Vernon Brewing Company also no longer open, so they will not be hosting any events. And given now that the, those were liquor license holders hosting the events, they were marking themselves as the only eligible business to sell, and that is not legal.
Yeah, I understand that that wouldn't have been, it's not legal in terms of the larger DORA. But you asked what would make more sense, and a a bar barbecue event that's, you know, all of the restaurants can have barbecue on the sidewalk and and that would, that kind of thing. That's an answer to your question. That makes more sense to me than, and the First Fridays, I don't make sense to me.
Another point of clarification is they cannot sell outside of their doors during a DORA event. That requires a special look, special event liquor license that is separate from DORA. So if a DORA event is happening, they have to sell within the boundaries of what their liquor license allows.
Again, this is all new, because I'm not.
No, no, yeah, I just point of clarification.
Yeah, just trying to answer your question. It was a reasonable question, and I I thought it deserved an answer, so.
Um, we still have about seven minutes. I.
We have three.
Is it three?
Three minutes.
Like I said, I I'm glad you, I asked you to come. I don't know if we had the legislation coming to us prior to that, but now I'm glad. It's it's sad we've got to this position. Like I said, we met with Anthony right before he left. And um, here we are, eight days out, 10 days out from your First Friday, and our backs are against the wall once again. Like I said, it's gonna get one or two readings at least. I mean, there's, I've heard a little bit from other people. I'm not sure the stickers is what I wanna see on the sidewalks. I understand your demise with, I was that guy dragging those street blocking signs out every First Friday. I know what it takes. There's, we got a couple of minutes. Are there anybody that you brought that we, you think we need to hear from? I do see the fire chief sitting there. Did you come for this?
No.
Okay.
He didn't want no part of it.
Lacy, do you have any events that are just adults only?
We do not.
See, that's what I would think would be better.
We are not an events organization. We are an organization that hosts events. Um, we do the First Fridays, we do Johnny Appleseed, and we do Winter in Downtown. The rest of my time is spent on downtown beautification projects, other economic development projects, um, and community development projects that are separate from these events. These events take up a fraction of of the time that I work in this organization.
And I think a lot of the events are really spearheaded by downtown businesses who want to see things happen. And that's not necessarily coming from your office. That's rather our downtown businesses who are um, seeing things that they want to happen downtown, and they're bringing them to Lacy, and she is kind of their their spokesperson for some of those.
Uh, there are a few non-liquor license holder merchants that came tonight. Do you have anything you want to, Josh? Can I invite Josh up to?
Yeah, we have a minute. Go ahead, Josh.
Evening, Council. My name is Josh Kirby. Um, just because it's relevant to this conversation, I wanna give you a very brief background about uh, who I am and how I'm involved in all of this. A resident of Mount Vernon from 2012 until 2022. I I moved out of the city of Mount Vernon last year due to my occupation. Uh, but I did serve as a patrol officer here in the city of Mount Vernon from 2016 until 2020. So I have law enforcement perspective here in the community as well as community ties here. In addition to that, I am a business owner here in the downtown area, so I'm actually on East Vine, or I'm sorry, uh, East Gambier Street. Uh, we are not a liquor license holder, and so this is beneficial for us. So I will preface uh, what I will say next with that, that I do benefit from the DORA boundaries and DORA events. And the fact that people can bring alcohol or at least consume alcohol, walk around, and hopefully come to my business and support that. After listening to the concerns um, tonight presented by council, then I wanna give you um, my perspective as working DORA events. So I now work for the city of Dublin, um, and in 2021, they started DORA events. Dublin is much larger than Mount Vernon, and the scale in which the the community there, they are, they are protective of their community, but also there's a lot of people there. So if you're not familiar, the DORA boundaries there in the city of Dublin is the old downtown Dublin as well as the British Park area. We're talking about a urban area that on any Friday or Saturday night, we're gonna have thousands upon thousands of people there. When they first started the event, then they paid officers to work overtime with the expectation that I believe is reasonable that with alcohol comes problems, alcohol-related issues, right? However, we did not experience that. Um, I personally worked several of these events, walking around with the people there. Surprisingly, a large portion of the people that I would see carrying DORA cups around were in fact families that had their kids with them. They would come out on a Friday evening, a Saturday evening with their family to come enjoy the restaurant, to come enjoy the parks, to come enjoy here, the events going on, um, and they purchased one or two drinks. It was not a um, getting out of hand type of scenario. They enjoyed it responsibly, and it was something that then they could invite their family.
Thank you. I, we are cutting into somebody else's time. Thank you. All right, so here's what I plan on doing. I assume you wanna discuss this a little further next meeting? Okay, we have 15 minutes for this, sir, next meeting? If you care to attend, please do. Um, so we'll get a first reading tonight. Thank you.
Okay, we're adjourned the uh, planning and adjourning. We're gonna move now to Employee Community Relations with Mr. Francis to discuss Assistant Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, turn this over to uh, Ms. Johnson. I'm I'm sure you've all had a chance to uh, look at the piece of legislation. Uh, I hope if you had any questions you you got with uh, Mr. Boren or Ms. Johnson. But uh, I give them this this 10 minutes to uh, uh, explain the piece of legislation. Ms. Johnson?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Uh, so the information that's being passed around right now is a compensation analysis that was completed back in November of 2021. So we would, uh, Mr. Boren and I are going to be speaking on the salary for the Assistant Law Director. So the second page, you're gonna see the market study, comparable jurisdictions, what uh, cities were um, a part of this analysis. And in that last page, you're going to see the actual data. So that is what we're gonna concentrate on right now. We are currently looking for an Assistant Law Director, and I would like to report that uh, since I have posted the position approximately six, six or so weeks ago, um, I have had one, one applicant who has qualified for the position. And uh, so Mr. Boren and I would like to talk to you about increasing the salary that is um, that we think that is the issue regarding the applicants that are coming through. So on the third page that I'd like to talk to you about is the current salary that is offered for the Assistant Law Director right now is roughly a little over $62,000 per year. And you're gonna see on uh, for the market average, the market average in our area is roughly a little over $73,000, and the difference is $10,857. And so, Mr. Boren, we'd like to propose an increase of the salary of $10,000.
So that would move it to the average of the salaries. So there are still people who are above that and some people who are below. But the Assistant Law Director who just left, um, he he got $10,000 more from Delaware. So we're, not only do we have the salary survey showing that we're significantly below the average of what other people are paying for this position, but we're also asking for, you know, we also know that from actual experience from how we lost one of our employees.
Let me, since you max, you compared to Delaware, what is Delaware's budget for the year? I'm sure it's higher than ours. Maybe double?
I have no idea. But you know, I mean, but the.
Just a minute. Go ahead.
Well, I I just wanted to bring your attention to the, all of the the cities that were comparable. The market study also included the city of Delaware, Ashland, Medina, New Philly, comparable cities. And I just have not received the the applications, just because I I do list the salary on an Indeed ad, and I'm just not getting the the applicants that I feel should be coming in through. And I will also let you know that when I started here in October, um, we also had the same search, and I received one applicant uh, that we interviewed, and it actually happened to be Mr. Potts that we did um, hire. So this is just, it's just a ongoing problem. And we're we're just not comparable. Our salary is just not where it needs to be.
This is the third increase for this Assistant Law Director too, because we increased it, right?
Well, yes. And we've been, we're trying to recruit talented people who will come here and stay. Both of the last two Assistant Law Directors have lasted about four and a half months and then taken month, significantly more money and gone elsewhere. I will tell you that.
Did we do X interviews?
Yes, I did meet with uh, Mr. Potts, and it it is a, an issue in salary.
Just a little thought. Um, the $10,000 is what you want.
Mm-hmm.
But in reality, it's actually gonna be $11,000, over $11,000.
No, we just wanna increase it by $10,000. I'm just showing you a difference.
I'm I'm talking, you increase it, this position receives uh, peers of Medicare and so on, so that adds up. So we can look at the $10,000, but we really have to look at if it's gonna be $11,000, over $11,000 of uh, of position. And the the Assistant Director of Law Number One gets a 14% increase, but Number Two gets a 16% increase. So raising all that up, and unlike Mr. Hillier, we're not Dublin.
Well, we're not, but we're Mount Vernon, and we really need to be marketable.
Yeah, I mean, we have to, we we lose people to them. We cannot keep paying at this lower level, and the turnover, the amount of time and effort that we are putting into training people for them to then just disappear is, it brings no return to us.
Yes, let me, let me ask a question on that. I I used to know a number that it costs to lose somebody and then retrain a new employee. Do you have a, I mean?
I don't have that data, you know, with me available right now, but you know, it is very significant. It is very, yeah.
So I I gotta tell you that personally I would support this because if we, you know, we're losing people, and there's a cost to losing people. We not only lose production in the work, but we also have to retrain and send to trainings and things a new person that we hire each time. So there there is a, there's a, there's a, we're losing money by having to rehire every four and a half months. I'll I'll tell you that.
Mr. Sheriff, I can also just respond to that from, of course, the last time that I checked with the Society for Human Resource Management, it was in excess of $5,000.
I will also say that
That's a mention of lost time.
Right.
That there will be, there will be a a multi-year contract required of whoever we choose to hire this time. We're just not gonna do this again. But you know, I mean, is that other communities around us are paying more than we are, we have. And so.
Is there a penalty for not living up to the multi-year contract?
There will be, yes.
Give me an example.
Hmm?
Give me an example. Is it like a, it's a financial penalty, I assume?
There will be either a financial penalty or will require specific performance of that they comply with the terms of their, of the contract.
So this is raising both of the Assistant Law Directors?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that we keep the one that has tenure at a higher rate than who is coming in fresh.
We are retaining that position and also bringing on someone.
Thank you.
So Assistant Law Director One at the beginning of the year got around 14%?
No.
What was the raise? Terry Scott?
It was three and a half percent.
Three and a half?
Yeah.
And now we're adding, now we're adding 16% more? I'm sorry, 14% more? Where's this coming out of your, your budget?
Well, we have a, we've had a number of openings, and uh, after examining the openings that we've had, we've had a legal assistant that was out for, that was unfilled for several months, plus the Assistant Director of Law, which continues to be on uh, was open. So the 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 actual money in the line item will not be a problem.
For this year?
For this year.
Then we gotta figure it out next year.
Yes.
My time's up on this committee. I'm gonna, I'm gonna give this a second reading. Uh, we talked about that. So we'll give it a second reading, have a 10-minute committee meeting or at our next meeting. And that that way, we still got a couple of weeks to to call up uh, Ms. Johnson and Mr. Boren.
Anyone who has questions, we're happy to talk about them.
Yes, please feel free to connect with me.
This is one of those times where I think we really need to to plug into them and and uh, because we can question things, but it's trying to get on the right track.
Right, and this data is from two years ago, so uh, even with the, another compensation analysis, it could fluctuate, but.
It has not gone down.
Yeah, it has not gone that way.
Gonna adjourn that Assistant Law Director Committee meeting. We'll move to part-time seasonal wages, also with Mr. Francis of Employee Community Relations. Mr. Francis?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Zek?
Yes, sir.
We we had our uh, committee meeting, our last meeting. Um, anybody have any questions that uh, they could have got, got ahold of you? Where do we look at with the seasonal, with the part-time, the full-time, uh, who sets where? And and uh, the increases and where they're gonna take place?
Yeah, I had a chance to sit down with Mr. Scott after last meeting briefly. I finally understood his question a little better, which was, would we be using full-time firefighters in a part-time fire inspector role? And the answer to that is no. These would be newly hired uh, fire inspectors listed for that purpose. And Chief, if you wanna come up with, if they have questions, we can answer those. But um, can't pull it up right now, it's buried in here, but uh.
Good evening.
Essentially, essentially, we use, Ms. Johnson and I used an analysis, well, we only heard from Senator, of where they're paying their part-time firefighters, which is uh, about 40 to 50 cents below where we proposed firefighters be paid. Uh, I believe in this legislation, we think they're the most specialized group. Um, and then we worked kind of backwards from there. So I know Mr. Hillier um, some time ago had asked about increasing the parking enforcement officer to $15. When we start working back, fire department seasonal, these are pretty much students we hire to come in and test hydrants and hose. Engineering, as we've talked about, uh, uses uh, part-time labor for, um, well, in the recent past, um, tree surveys. Uh, Mr. Hillier, I believe we're all in agreement, you can strike, you can amend and strike water wastewater department too. I don't know that we need that. Um, but water and wastewater uh, has tried for years, and I think they've got the supervisory oversight now to hire some seasonals for hydrant painting. And then obviously, as we talked to Mr. Hinkle, uh, he uses them heavily in the cemetery and streets department. But would like to be able to recruit some in the parks department in the future, so. But would like to be able to recruit some in the parks department in the future, so. I think we're open for questions.
Mr. Hillier? I'm sorry, Tammy, I, I heard you had some questions about the inspector and stuff.
That's, yeah, you know, the one question I brought up is that one time we talked about fire inspections, everybody on the fire department is going to be trained in fire inspections. When we went to Gambier, anybody who worked at Gambier had to do fire inspection because they had to know the buildings. And then now we're looking at part-time this, part-time that. Can you tell me where we're at on the fire inspections?
Yeah, well, we have, we have, I just looked up today, we have about 13 of us that are, that are certified fire inspectors. But, but here's, and then, but here's, give you a little background. So about 2006, we started doing fire inspections throughout the whole city. And then in about 2010, 11, or 2011, we went to just Terry Davis. It's important, everybody still pitches in, does, does what we can, but the importance is that consistency throughout. When we, when we scrambled the whole city with 13 or 14 of us out doing fire inspections, it, it was tough to get, anything with code has a little bit of gray area, you know, type deal. So it was tough to get that consistency of those people calling in and getting that, you know, what, what everybody should do, you know, type deal. And one good thing about, you know, a fire schedule, 24 and 48 off, right, it sounds like a pretty good schedule, right? But not a very good schedule when you're trying to plan stuff. You give somebody to go do that fire inspection, and then they don't come back for three days, then they take a comp day, vacation day, then it's another three days, and then all of a sudden, you're, you're stretching, you're stretching things out, getting back with, with our business owners. We got about thousands, some, I don't know what the exact number is of, of businesses in our, in our community. We'd like to try to reach everybody with a, with a, with a basic fire inspection. We can currently only get about 400 or so of those, of those done a year now. Because not only with, with Terry, we got the fire prevention talks that we do, we got fire, fire extinguishers, that happens out of his office class, classes. Foster inspections go way up, and believe it or not, there is a lot of construction happening in our, in our, in our city, in, in our surrounding areas.
So did Terry do the 400 himself, then? Or was that, did he do the majority?
The majority, the, the very, very vast majority. It's tough, because, you know, anymore, back when we did them, we'd been, when we did about eight runs a day. Right now, we're about 15, 17 runs a day, with 25 runs not uncommon. So by the time we, we do our, do our training, do our, take our calls, and then call a business owner and say, hey, can we schedule a, a fire inspection? And to go in and, and not get called, called out to have to, to leave that fire inspection, that's where, you know, problems start, start happening, start arising. So, so Terry, that is a very, very busy department. Matter of fact, I just spoke with Frank Cook for the Ohio Fire Chiefs, who's doing our organizational assessment today to prepare for our strategic planning yesterday, and I said, hey, can you just give me, because they said it's done, it's coming real soon, I know it's been a long time, type deal. But I said, can you give me a little snapshot? I gotta prepare for a, for a meeting tomorrow of, of a couple of things that I can kind of plan for. And number one was assistant chief. Number two was, you need more people in your fire prevention bureau. Education's where, where it's all, where it's all at. And one person to the city of Mount Vernon, in our surrounding areas and college township, we owe it to our, our citizens, and we can do better.
Is this fire inspector the same one that does the inspections of the food trucks now?
Yep, 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 Terry. So like I said, you know, but with the 13 of us down here, too, we, we go out, I mean, we help out when we can, we take, take the phone calls. For instance, I've been one since 2006. When people call in, people call in, I'll answer the ones I know, but I usually wait till Terry comes, you know? I'm, I'm a paramedic, too, but I'm not going to be the first one picked on the playground, you know, for some stuff, you know, in a while. So it's important to know somebody that, you know, you're a fire inspector, and you, that's your gig, right? You, you know it, and, and that's what we're looking for, just to get Terry some help. And of course, I'm hoping with Mr. Scott that it can be, that it can be funded, you know, because through, through other legislation, we said that we could have up to 25 part-timers. We already have part-timers into our program, and then we, we kind of factored in our cost through college township of 18 part-timers at the paramedic level. Currently, we only have about 10 part-timers, really only about seven of those being pretty active. And we, sometimes we have to fill those spots with full-timers, but I'm, I'm assuming that, that, that there's funding, you know, out of our Gambier, not the, not the city's coffers, the Gambier.
I'm, I'm gonna let Tammy ask a question.
Yeah.
Because my time's running out, and we'll, this will be a third reading, so we'll have discussion after.
Clarification, Mr. Zick, you said Centerburg's hourly rate was about 50 cents less, that, for their part-time people, is that what you meant? And leaf workers have been struck from this, does that mean in a couple of months, we're going to have to bring it back?
No, it seemed redundant, because there's street department seasonals, and then there's street department leaf workers, and they make the same money, so I feel like it's the same, same thing.
John, can I ask a quick question? Did I just hear you say your fire inspectors are checking these mobiles that are coming into town? The food trucks you called it?
Yes.
We get, we need to get a single dime out of these people, right? We don't get income tax, nothing from these trucks that are sitting on our streets, and then we're using highly qualified people to make sure they're doing their job?
Well, we want to make sure they don't explode either.
And this is something I think we, no, you have to, I'm not saying that, and the health department should, they'll be there as well. But there again, we have a taco truck-
Are they charging a licensing fee?
We have a taco truck sitting right outside the Chipotle's door, selling tacos, and we're not getting a dime from this guy for as much as Chipotle's? You're doing fire inspections at Chipotle's, I assume?
Sure, yeah. Yeah, and that, hopefully that's come in-
I think it's legislation we need to look at, especially if we're using fire department funds to check these guys out every time they pull into town.
Yeah, and, and hopefully that, that's coming in the near future here, and it's been kind of coined with Terry, is we can work through, the engineering has, has the license fees-
The permitting office.
Permitting, yeah, permitting to come through, because there's a lot, and we're going out and doing hydro tests, more or less to the state. I mean, it, there's no reason why we shouldn't be charging, charging a fee for that stuff. So, so, so really, within the near future, you know, this, even this part-time program for a fire inspector to be, then you're probably funded through, through permits. You're absolutely right.
I'm gonna wrap it up unless anybody's got a question.
Does anybody think they'll need chief for later in the meeting?
Yes, no, I'm just kidding.
I'll be at the door then.
I thought, ouch!
You had input.
I thought you might, now if I ignored you sitting back there, and you had-
That's right, that's right. All right, thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, we're gonna adjourn the employee community relations, we're now in recess until 7:30 PM, we begin the legislative portion of the meeting. At 7:30 PM, gonna call the legislative portion of the May 22th City Council meeting to order. Mr. Hill, please call the roll. Mrs. Woods?
Here.
Mr. Francis?
Here.
Ms. Keener?
Here.
Mr. Hillier?
Here.
Mrs. Siegel?
Here.
Mr. Severance?
Here.
Mr. Mayhem?
Here.
We are in session. Now, we had two people said, we're gonna give the invocation, I see neither one here. Is Dwayne Kramer or Josh Brady here? Okay, Mr. Mayhem, to give the invocation, please rise to the invocation room, standing for the pledge.
Father God, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. We know that your word says that the government rests on your shoulders, and we know that your word says that government is the authority to do good for the people. I pray that those principles would govern our meeting tonight, and that we would be wise, that we've had ears to hear and eyes to see. Thank you for the good people who have come to speak, and bless these proceedings. We ask these things in your son's name, amen.
Thank you.
We had volunteer opportunities that we were able to do through this program, so we chose like two ones that we, like, thought would be like, that we liked, chose, that we liked. And so the first one we did was in December, and we made meals for the winter sanctuary. We just stayed after our meeting and like, set up like an assembly line, and then got them delivered. And then in, it was April, we picked up trash and sticks with the Parks Department at Memorial Park, and then there's some pictures up there from that, so.
Yeah.
Hey, President and Counsel, you'll be back. So this is an overview, essentially, learning about the different departments of government and how they work, getting insight into the process itself through our own, like, council-esque meetings, learning about the different leadership roles and how they're done, and getting the opportunity to organize and execute volunteer projects on our own, which was very insightful. And we also have a special thanks to our sponsors, Mark and Olin Hopper from the Factory Link, they helped sponsor our t-shirts for the group, as well as lunch after our park cleanup, and the lunches that we made for the winter sanctuary. So thank you, and, um, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. How many of you are juniors?
All of them.
We're all juniors.
All juniors, that's interesting, so, yeah, we have some youth coming up in this community, and that's, that's what we need. We need people who are interested in, in, in community government, community activities. We appreciate the work you've done.
Mr. President, is it 18 or 21 you have to be to run for council?
18.
18. There you go, who's 17?
There you go.
Not this term, but the next one.
Well, thank you. Next, we have Zach Green, Commissioner for Knox Public Health. Zach? Got to keep the follow, Zach.
I, I want to also share, congratulations, you know, the young leaders in our community, it's absolutely imperative that you guys continue moving forward. It takes a lot of understanding, but guts, quite frankly, to come up here and present as juniors, that's, that's actually outstanding. Congratulations.
Zach Green, Health Commissioner, Knox Public Health, thank you again for having me, I apologize for last time, we had illness in, in the family, I was home with three sick kids, I'd much rather have been here, believe me when I say that. So in front of you, in regards to these stats, and that's why it's a little off for our first quarter, I, I want to bring your attention to the births and deaths. That's always, at least the last couple of times I've been here, a conversation, and I instructed my team to drill it down to actually births and deaths rather than certifications issued. So there's a little bit of difference. So as, as you guys asked those questions, I brought it back to my team, I go, tell me exactly what this means. And they're like, well, it's whoever comes in and needs a death certificate. And I'm like, what if they need three for whatever reason? Well, it's resembled here. So that doesn't really paint you a clear picture. So for the zip code of 43050, that's the closest I could drill it down, that actually is true births, and deaths within that jurisdiction, okay?
Even if they were born somewhere else?
Yeah, if they were born even outside the state of Ohio, we're capturing that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's a great question.
So thank you for that, because I know that that is always my first question, and I appreciate you getting more detailed on that.
Yes, and, and again, as I've always told you, if there's something that you want more drilled down, or something, and we're gonna start looking at influenza trends, rhinovirus, et cetera. I don't know if you saw the article out of New York in reference to polio detection in, in wastewater. It is a tool for us to actually be able to utilize in a preventative manner, so we can mitigate quickly. So we do very minimal at, at this point, but it's something that, as we continue to strive forward, I know, working with Mr. Zick, that's something that they are definitely interested in moving forward with. So I'm excited to get that off the ground. Every little bit helps, and we can identify surveillance out of a much larger picture. Just education, Lyme disease, Lyme disease awareness through tick, uh, tick-borne diseases, June through September is when we typically see the most positive Lyme cases. Please, please educate those around you, if you are in the woods, check yourself when you get out. Black-legged deer ticks continue to be problematic. And the last thing, facility update, so I think, prior, before I, last time I met you, with you guys, we have not purchased the property downtown. So we purchased about a block lower, a block and a half, 200 West Vine Street. I'm sure you're familiar with the string glass property. We do have current occupancy at 201, have a finance team and a few administrators down there, and we are in the process to compile in a bid package as we look to remodel the 4,000 square feet string glass shop. That is something that we have intentions of it being fully operational by the end of the year, hoping that we actually can nail down a contractor. But that is, that is our current goal. That'll have about 10 medical beds, several behavioral health, and we, we love to outfit it and run it, probably give or take about 8,000 patients a year in that area. So that is what I call phase one of the downtown property. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, so, so the public knows, because you have a facility down, downtown, is it still a facility out, or if I have a health issue, where can I go? Nanville, here, out there?
Correct. So all our sites are going to continue to be operational. So our main site on Upper Gilcrest will continue to provide all the services that it once did. What we're moving is the 206 South Mulberry, the condo association there next to the Ovals. Once we're done remodeling this 4,000 square feet at 202 West Vine Street, we'll be moving that practice over. So that will be the only change once it's ready to go.
I'm hearing a widespread of-
Okay.
Of hand, foot, and mouth.
Okay.
Have, have you, are you catching much of that there?
We're not seeing much of that.
Okay.
At least not to my knowledge.
Okay, I'm, I'm hearing-
A lot of GI stuff right now?
I, I know of two families have had-
Okay.
And, and four kids have had it, so I'm just curious if you're, if you're hearing it.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Other questions?
I spoke earlier about food trucks in Malvern, and I know, or didn't realize, our fire department spends time checking out these food trucks in Malvern. We currently have no legislation on food trucks. I assume you guys inspect them as you can to make sure they're licensed, they're probably licensed from other towns. I bring up as an issue when I see a taco truck from out of town parking 50 feet from a Chipotle door-
Okay.
And paying zero taxes, zero anything to the city of Malvern, yet we're spending money because they're here. I talked to Mr. Zick about possible legislation, I assume you'd be interested in being a part of that conversation as well?
Absolutely, yes.
I just don't, we, I mean, we have a food truck that parks in front of our county commissioner's office on High Street, and thinks that's a great place to sell their goods. And there's, right now, we have nothing we can do about it. If we did, we didn't. But, and I know you guys are probably checking to make sure the license and everything else, or would handle complaints and, and-
They, they would need a mobile license, obviously, to operate.
Correct. But most of them probably are bringing them from Franklin County, wherever else they're coming from, and, so, yeah, I would appreciate that conversation in the future.
Is that mobile license just like something they get through the state or whatever, and then they can go anywhere?
No, it's through the local jurisdiction. We do a lot of mobile inspections, they actually park their rig out in our parking lot, and they get a normal inspection, no different than their, you know, at a typical ground facility.
And they could take that and go to Columbus if they wanted, correct?
That's, depending on what license they receive.
Yeah, yes. I know the background, just on the wall of it.
So I be with legislators on a monthly basis, so if that's something we want to draw up, I can start planning C's for sure.
Thank you. Other questions? Well, thank you, Zach, appreciate you being here for the update. Counsel, on your packet is the agenda, are there any additions or corrections? Then also, was approved by consensus? And Mr. Hill asks that you read these by title and number only this evening. We have no resolutions for a third reading or a second reading. We do have several for a first reading, the first one is Resolution Number 2023-50, Mr. Hill.
Resolution Number 2023-50, a resolution authorizing and directing the Safety Service Director of the City of Mount Vernon, Ohio, to enter into a contract with Stephen Carpenter to allow Stephen Carpenter, Carpenter to lease the property located at 16 North Main Street and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Severance?
Yes, I move to suspend the rule requiring three separate readings and take Resolution Number 2023-50 to its third and final reading.
Second.
I move in second for suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill. Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem?
Yes.
The rule is suspended, Mr. Severance?
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mr. Severance?
Yes, I move to adopt resolution twenty-twenty-three-dash-fifty.
Second.
We moved it second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mr. Severance?
We heard from this earlier, and I think we want to move this forward.
Any other discussions? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is resolution number twenty-twenty-three-day-fifty-one. Mr. Hill?
Resolution number twenty-twenty-three-dash-fifty-one, a resolution authorizing and directing the Safety Service Director of the City of Mount Vernon, Ohio, to enter into a contract with Almost Famous Sweets and sodas LLC to allow Almost Famous Sweets and sodas LLC to lease the property located at five East High Street and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Severance?
Yes, I move to suspend the rule requiring three separate readings and take resolution twenty-twenty-three-dash-fifty-one to its third and final reading.
Second.
We moved it second for the suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem?
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mr. Severance?
Yes, I move to adopt resolution twenty-twenty-three-dash-fifty-one.
Second.
We moved it second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mr. Severance?
Nothing further. Ready to move forward.
Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is resolution number twenty-twenty-three-dash-fifty-two. Mr. Hill?
Resolution number twenty-twenty-three-dash-fifty-two, a resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the City of Mount Vernon to make supplemental appropriations.
Mrs. Seville?
Thank you. I would like to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take resolution number twenty-twenty-three-dash-fifty-two to its third and final reading.
Second. We moved it second for the adoption, for the suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mr. Seville?
Thank you. I move to adopt...
Mrs. Seville, sorry.
I move to adopt resolution number twenty-twenty-three-dash-fifty-two.
Second. We moved it second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Seville?
Thank you. Hey, Terry, we're going to talk about a lot of money. Four hundred thousand dollars, that grant. That's wonderful.
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Seville and counsel. We do have a shopping list. Of course, supplemental appropriations are always unanticipated revenues coming into the city's treasury at the beginning of the year, so that is an asset in itself. Let's start off with number one here. At fifteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, the police department has garnered a grant from the Justice Administrative Program. They're going to be working with their license plate cameras throughout the city. Items two, three, four, and five is a combined for thirty-five thousand. Your police chief spoke to you at your last meeting in regards to the Violence Against Women's Act, the Ohio Criminal Justice Grant that the department was provided with for the liaison position. You had all your discussions at your last meeting on that item. Number six is four hundred thousand dollars. On behalf of the Ariel Foundation, we like to recognize again their continued support for our projects throughout our community. This particular resources will go to replace the C-A-N-C roof of the depot out there. Of course, the city is also putting in money, nearly about as much as the grant award is as well. Item seven, we have Jim and Suzie Simpson wants to provide support to our PAC United program for forty dollars. We appreciate their support in that, and I know the PAC United program continues to be a good one and be on behalf of the city. On number eight, at one hundred and eighty-seven, eight forty-seven, twenty-seven, in regards to the police, or the fire chief getting a grant for vehicle exhaust system and fire supply hose. We have both of those projects, the bids have come in for. We have all of that information ready to go. We're just waiting for the appropriations for council support here, and we'll be ready to get those orders right on point. And then your last item for eleven thousand five hundred and fifty, Ariel Foundation. Now, this looks a little backtracking, and it is, but Ariel Foundation for the snow removal contract over twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three program. We had a little bit of a mix-up in communications along the early parts. Thanks goodness, we didn't have much snow removal in this time period. I think maybe once or twice, perhaps. But anyhow, we, again, Ariel Foundation has been supporting this particular program for a number of years. It encompasses the entire sidewalks over here around Mount Vernon Avenue and over into the school systems clear out to the university as well. So, we appreciate, again, I know Mr. Seven Jude spoke at the last meeting on how much money the Ariel Foundation has provided to our community and the city of Mount Vernon. This is astronomical at this point, and they continue to do so. Thank you, Mrs. Seville.
Could you or somebody elaborate a little more on number one? What exactly is our license plate cameras?
Go ahead. There's a technology now where the chief can set up stationary cameras at major entry points of the city. The camera can then read license plates and review it for criminal warrants and report that to officers.
And just to further explain, that has nothing to do with speeding tickets, correct?
Nope. No.
I understand, but there'll be phone calls.
Yeah, and also for missing children alerts and things like that. Yeah, the Amber Alerts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Any other questions? Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is resolution number twenty-twenty-three-day-fifty-three. Mr. Hill?
Resolution number twenty-twenty-three-dash-fifty-three, a resolution amending the City of Mount Vernon's designated outdoor refreshment area signage and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hillier?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will give this a first reading and remind you, we do have a committee meeting.
This resolution receives its first reading. Next resolution is resolution number twenty-twenty-three-dash-fifty-four. Mr. Hill?
Resolution number twenty-twenty-three-dash-fifty-four, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to release a request for qualifications for identifying and selecting a qualified firm or firms to provide real estate services and other services related to and for the South Sandusky Street, State Route thirteen relocation project, AKA NKNO dash one-one-six-eight-four-zero, identify and enter into contract with the selected firm or firms for those services and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Severance?
Yes, I move to suspend the rule requiring three separate readings and take resolution twenty-twenty-three-dash-fifty-four to its third and final reading.
Second.
We moved it second for the suspension of the rules and discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem?
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mr. Severance?
Yes, I move to adopt resolution twenty-twenty-three-dash-fifty-four.
Second.
We moved it second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mr. Severance?
Yes, Brian, if you could come, please, and explain this a little bit?
Great. So, we've seen this about four hundred times. So, this is our South Sandusky Corridor project. Mr. Severance and I made a little trip to ODOT and asked for some money, and they said yes. So, what we need to do, our next step, is to hire two qualified companies to help us with the real estate appraisals, check appraisals, and acquisitions for this project. So, we have been in touch with the people that are subject to acquisition multiple times. So, a lot of these folks are, I would say, hanging out, waiting for us to do the paperwork. So, since this is state and federally funded, we will have to do a qualification-based selection to get the ODOT pre-qualified companies on board to help with this phase of work. Questions?
Any questions?
The amount was what?
We have received a grant for three-point-three million dollars.
No, three million. I didn't know about the point three.
Very good job.
Yeah, well, like I said, he's pretty good at... I mean, it was great. He's like talking to people about their kids that are going to M V U. I mean, it was a really good networking event. I mean, he knew more people there than I did. It was great.
You're smooth now.
Twitches and arms. Any other discussion?
We'll go back for more eventually.
That's right. You got to go back. Give us a couple of years, we got to go back.
Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted, and that concludes the resolutions for this evening. We now move to ordinances. The first ordinance is for third reading. That's ordinance number twenty-twenty-three-day-seventeen. Mr. Hill?
Ordinance number twenty-twenty-three-dash-seventeen, an ordinance amending the zoning classification of parcel number six-six-dash-zero-five-three-two-nine-point-zero-zero-zero and parcel number six-six-dash-zero-two-three-three-five-point-zero-zero-zero, also known as three-oh-one and three-oh-three North Norton Street, respectively, from the present zoning of R-one Single Family District to PCDD, plan a commercial development district, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hillier?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to postpone to a date definite, that being June twelfth, where we'll have a public hearing and the third reading following.
This ordinance is... We have a motion and a second to postpone this to June the twelfth. Any discussion? Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem?
Yes.
This ordinance is postponed to the twelfth of June. Next ordinance is ordinance number twenty-twenty-three-dash-nineteen. Mr. Hill?
Ordinance number twenty-twenty-three-dash-nineteen, an ordinance setting hourly compensation for part-time and seasonal personnel in the City of Mount Vernon and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Francis?
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance receives a third reading, so I move to adopt ordinance twenty-twenty-three-nineteen.
Second to the motion?
That's fine. I'll question it later.
Okay, we moved it second for the adoption of this ordinance. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mike, you said you had a question.
Well, I thought we were supposed to amend Water, Wastewater Department Two in this. So, do you ask for that amendment now?
We can, I mean, we can amend it at any time prior to adoption.
I would ask that to be amended. I mean, that's what we're supposed to try to do here. So, John, as we had spoken with Mr. Zick earlier, he'd asked that the line with Water, Wastewater Department Two be scratched.
So, we need to amend that.
You need to amend that if you would.
So, we need to move to amend.
Wait, is that a motion?
There's a first and a second.
Yeah, Mr., I heard Mr. Hillier make that motion. We need a second to that.
Is there a second to...
Second.
Okay, we're now having a discussion on an amendment to this ordinance. Any discussion on the amendment?
Mr. Zick, go ahead.
Yeah, we talked earlier in the committee meeting, and as I talked to Mr. Reinhardt, I'm not entirely sure why we had two levels of water, wastewater, seasonals. We think that the first level's sufficient, so would support council striking that wastewater.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem?
Yes.
The ordinance is amended, and for those in the back, we're not amending the amendment. We're just amending, doing the amendment.
That will move to adopt ordinance twenty-twenty-three-nineteen as amended?
That's correct.
As amended.
And I've got this one second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance as amended. Any discussion?
Thank you.
Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem?
Yes.
This ordinance is adopted as amended. We now move to ordinance number twenty-twenty-three-day-twenty. Mr. Hill?
Ordinance number twenty-twenty-three-dash-twenty, an ordinance establishing the compensation for the assistant law directors in the office of the law director and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Francis?
We'll give this a second reading, Mr. President, in a ten-minute committee.
This ordinance receives a second reading. We now move to ordinances for first reading. The first one is ordinance number twenty-twenty-three-dash-twenty-one. Mr. Hill?
Ordinance number twenty-twenty-three-dash-twenty-one, an ordinance to accept the vacation of a portion of Lewis Street and South Alley in the City of Mount Vernon, Knox County, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hillier? Mr. Hillier?
I'll give this a first reading, and there's a public hearing on the June 26th.
This ordinance receives its first reading. The next ordinance is ordinance number 2023-22. Mr. Hill?
Ordinance number 2023-22, an ordinance amending the zoning classification of parcel number 66-00268.000, also known as 600 West Vine Street, from the present zoning of R2 Single and Two Family District to GB General Business and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hillier?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll give this a first reading, and it'll also be part of the public hearing on the 26th of June. Thank you.
This ordinance receives its first reading. The final ordinance for this evening is ordinance number 2023-23. Mr. Hill?
Ordinance number 2023-23, an ordinance establishing a zoning fee scheduled pursuant to section 1153.14 of the zoning code and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hillier?
Mr. President, I'd like to give this a first reading as well. And Mr. Zick, how long do you think you need to have to discuss this with council the next meeting?
I think 15 minutes, maybe?
We have a 15-minute meeting on that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
This ordinance also receives its first reading, and that concludes the legislative portion of the meeting. We now move to remarks to the administration. Mayor, Mayor Sark.
Thank you, Mr. President and council. I'm really, really proud tonight to have the leadership team here who have just really soaked in, and just, just, just sunk their teeth into understanding how the local government works. I will say that earlier today, I presented to a bunch of third graders who were sitting in this room and thought you were the President of the United States, Mr. Hawkins.
I gave a presentation to third graders at, at Gambier, and the question they asked me, since I'm president, does that mean you can't be arrested? They must have me confused with President Trump.
Yeah. Well, one of the, one of the, one of the reasons why, one of the reasons why I wanted to start this program, the third grade was the last time that these young people had local government in their curriculum. And so this is where the government actually really makes a difference in our lives, and that's what I think that this, this group of young people has been able to find out. Couple of really funny things is they, the third graders looked at one of the pictures up here of Terry Scott, and he's got the bright black beard, and they thought he was Doctor Who. And to our group, he's known as the big money guy. Okay, so anyway, Terry, we'll see what the next group calls you. I don't know, but it's, it's, it's interesting. Anyway, I just, I'm very proud of how you all have sunk your teeth into this program. Right out the gate, it's always, it's the roughest we're starting something with. And we've even hired one, as one of our contractors, as you can see, running the video stream. So anyway, the Hi-Wat Water Park opens up this Saturday. It is scheduled to be 74 degrees and partly sunny, so hopefully we will see some people out there. Again, all the third graders were really excited that the Hi-Wat Water Park is opening up and starting off this summer. Last thing that I will mention to you all is that Monday is the Memorial Day Parade and Service. Again, as our friend, Mr. Fair would always say, it is a day of remembrance and reflection and honoring those that gave up their life. It's not a day of celebration, it's a day of remembrance and reflection. Having said that, we do have 43 confirmed floats for the parade, and we have a really nice ceremony planned for the, at the steps of the Knox Memorial. If you care to come, come down, that would be great. Kathy Hirsch is our new parade coordinator, and she tells me she would like one more volunteer to help out if, if we can find someone who would like to help just in the general staging area. So anyway, that is all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Zick?
Nothing tonight?
Mr. Scott?
Nothing further, Mr. President?
Mr. Stoller?
Nothing, Mr. President.
Mr. Braun?
I have nothing, thank you.
Mr. Severance?
Nothing, Mr. President.
Mr. Francis?
Thank you, Mr. President. As the mayor stated, Monday will be Memorial Day, so we shouldn't let somebody give us a downer, but we're going to have a picnic, we're going to, we're going to grill out, we're going to do it. If you do that, remember that you're able to do it because of every one of those individuals that sacrificed the final sacrifice for this country to give us that liberty and freedom to do that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mrs. Seville?
Thank you. It was really a pleasure having all of you here tonight, and it was fun listening to you, and it was also fun looking at the mayor, because he was smiling at you guys like a proud parent. He was just beaming over there. I don't know if you noticed how proud he was of you, but he was very, very proud of you.
You got me really excited when you did the amendment, and I was waiting for the amendment to the amendment, because they all went through that.
That's it. Thank you.
Mrs. Keener?
I would like to say thank you guys for coming. I recognize one young lady that I costumed as Scrooge, so great to see you here and, and expanding your skills. Next week is a very busy week. We start Monday, like the mayor said, with Memorial Day Parade, and we end on Friday with First Friday. And I would just encourage everybody to come out, bring their family, and enjoy those two events. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Hillier?
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple items real quick. Mayor, maybe you could elaborate, because I know somebody's going to get called and maybe a couple texts about what's going on with our video system. Did we get it back up with, while it went down and-
We have a network problem. That's what, we've been in touch with Mr. Oakley. We'll make sure that Ben, our IT guy, is, is in the loop, but it's a network error. It's nothing, the equipment that is back here is working fine, it's just, that's, the network error is why this TV will not work.
So you're saying it's in the wiring?
Yeah.
Nared it down there to the dumb me. It's in the wiring.
That's in the wiring.
Thank you. And just real quick, I, you saw me talk about First Friday, you saw me talk about Dora. You hear me ask questions about this, that, and the other when we talk about Mount Vernon and change, and Mount Vernon this, and we compare it to Delaware, and we compare it to Westerville, we compare it to Worcester. I'm not saying we don't need change. I'm not saying some things aren't good, but the two years I spent on the street as the park enforcement officer, then one of the neatest things I ever did was talk to the people that came to Mount Vernon and ask them why or what they were doing. And Mount Vernon has a uniqueness to it. There's a reason, there's, the people that live in Mount Vernon don't appreciate it as much, not all people, but the people that come from out of Mount Vernon appreciate Mount Vernon, especially our downtown, more than what a lot of people here in town do. So I was really, really upset to hear that we passed Dora based on some wrong information, how we, on the higher-rise code, that what we thought was an event that was going to be held such between Mulberry and Main on Vine Street is now a for-all. Take your cup anywhere. And now what do we do? That's not what Mount Vernon's based on. Thank you.
Mr. Mayhem?
Nothing this evening, sir.
Mrs. Woods?
Thank you, sir. Mayor, I still see some signs saying we're hiring for the water park. Are we still needing, needing some people?
They were fully staffed. They had to let a few people go, so they're kind of keeping a sufficient, you know, reserve of people. They are-
I just wanted to get that out there, if we're still needing to hire. Just, I don't think we can ever say enough to Ariel Foundation. Thank you, thank you, thank you for the donations this evening. And then just please have a safe, safe Memorial Day weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. I remember Mr. Fair many times saying, this is not, not a holiday, not a celebration, this is remembrance. And Mayor pointed that out very well. So thank you to all those who gave their ultimate for, for this country. Thank you for meeting, for being here this evening. That being said, I call for adjournment.
So move?
Second.
Been moved in second, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? We are adjourned.